Maybe now. Thank you, Doty. I didn't. I didn't see that. All right, now this sounds working, so I'll start over. We added to, sorry, today's date is September twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, and this is the special in the council. We did add to the agenda, the nondiscrimination implementation of plan of policy to the agenda. Do what? Is it working now? Good. Connie's calculator is working. She's excited. But anyway, so today's purpose of meeting is the twenty twenty six budget. We've got a couple of things we need to kind of put some numbers finalizing for Connie so she's been submitted. Uh, salaries is one, and dispatch is the other. We did plan a county, the city council joint meeting, uh, supposed to occur yesterday, and the county council and I think some of the commissioners had something come up where they could not meet, so that meeting was canceled. So, uh, we still need to try to reschedule another one, so hopefully we can get something together rather soon. Council, you've got to decide what you're willing to contribute for dispatch. It is not, uh, what they tell us is what we are willing to. States actually that they're required to, uh, cover the cost of it. It is not a city expense unless we even have our own dispatch for the city only, would it be, but that's not even being discussed or even be on the table for consideration, I don't think. So, we just need to decide how much we're willing to contribute for the twenty twenty six budget. Twenty five still doesn't get hashed out, but we're here at twenty six for this one. So, um... Still? Maybe they're behind. Okay, thank you. Where's Darrell? I know. You're gonna pull it up, Chief? Okay, I won't do that then, I was going to, if you are. I know it's warm, I'm sorry. Budget cuts, I cut the, we cut the, we cut the air out of the budget.
Let me try it again, just turn off. Yeah, I don't know.
I think the Chinese is dangerous.
Russian.
Like they did their airports with that stuff.
I think that's what was.
It's exactly what happened to our IT guy.
I think it's kind of funny, Gerald, but not funny, because it's huge, but it's in me, I've been upset, but it's good that you have to do it. You just got a little extra strand.
I had a little hair, now I ain't got none.
They can see it, they're in here. I don't know. I don't know what else to do.
I hope that don't happen. To a lot of other things. But Kirsty's what I'm worried about.
Well, we'll do the best we can. I apologize if you can't hear it. Uh, Connie, you have the recorder going? So if anybody has any question, is recorded on tape recorder, if they want to request that to listen to it, there, I'm sure we can provide it, right? So, all right, we'll move on, because we can't help the audio. I don't know what's going on with that. We had a problem once before, but we've had it fixed. I don't know if someone's messing with the controls, that's, no one's here for other meetings and stuff, maybe that's the issue that we'll figure it out. All right, so dispatch, what we're talking about. Council, um, I mean, we can make it short and sweet. How much does the coun, is the council willing to contribute anything towards dispatch for the twenty twenty six budget? I mean, if it's a yes or no, or how much, the discussion will be rather quick.
All right. I need to know, Connie, where do we stand with this?
Okay, well, I did check with the county yesterday, and, uh, they, at their budget workshops last week, they did not change the amount they had said they were gonna give us for next year, which is six hundred and fifty seven thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars.
Which gives us a deficit of how much?
Well, my budget is nine hundred and fifty three thousand, so it gives us that much of, just the nine fifty three and the six fifty seven is, oh, two hundred and ninety six thousand, almost three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand.
Yes, yes. So, in my miscellaneous revenue on when I'm working budgets, if I put in the amount that the county has, gonna be budgeted, or that they're gonna be budgeting, I'm showing that we would still have to cut a hundred and eighty five thousand out of the general budget. If I put in that the county would pay us nine hundred and fifty thousand, because the budget gives, um, you know, there's a little bit extra in there sometimes, depending on how much overtime worked and that kind of stuff. So if I do a budget, if I put in an estimated revenue coming in for dispatch of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that mean, that leaves me with an operating balance at the end of twenty six of a hundred and six thousand.
That's too low.
And that's what?
Too low.
It's about what it was last year. It, it, but it's low, yes, yes, but we, we made it. But do we know if the county's gonna pay us this nine hundred and fifty?
No, no.
You know, and I can, I can work it and put other numbers in there, and you can see that it's gonna shift, you know, like you said, a hundred and some thousand, there, we're still gonna be in the red, so.
And, I mean, I've looked at this stuff, and it's, it's a no-win situation, as I said earlier. Looking at the dispatch budget, I mean, it's all personnel. You, you can't reduce the dispatch budget unless you reduce personnel. So, I guess question number one, Chief and Bill, do we have any room for reducing the number of people that are working dispatch?
No, right now, we're operating on the air. I don't know. The current wages, those schedules, what are this? How, how to get, operate less dispatch, or whatever.
So, then the next question is, do we cut dispatch salaries? I'm not for the record, I'm not proposing that. I'm just asking questions, because we gotta come up with a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars somewhere. Right time?
If we only put in the estimate of what the county says they're gonna pay.
They've told us that. They've told us that, I'm sorry. So, in my mind, we gotta cut a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars, um, top rate dispatch. Now, I looked through, well, let me make this comment first. I don't accept that the county doesn't have money, or a way to generate the money. And let me, let me explain that. In twenty twenty three, according to the twenty twenty three... When the county was charging forty five dollars, remember that? Which they took away? That forty five dollar fee that they charged during twenty twenty three generated three hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars of revenue. So they gave up three hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars of revenue by taking that fee away. And they're now funding solid waste out of their general fund.
...there, because it's, it's a major problem, and I, and frankly, and, and...
We cut wages, same thing with police department. We have quality people, if we, if we cut, then we're gonna lose quality people, then with quality pieces.
Michael, I, I threw that out, it's not a realistic option. We, we've only got four hundred thousand budget for wages in dispatch. If we have to cut a hundred and eighty five thousand, you have to cut everybody's salary in half?
Yeah.
You know?
No, I, he was using it as, where do we cut to pay this? I mean, that's what you're, you're...
We, we don't have any money.
And there's nothing to cut, I mean...
No.
We shouldn't, as a city, we shouldn't have to cut a lot of our expenses and things that, you know, our residents expect us to provide, paving streets, or, or parks, or this, or that, to cover an expense that's not our bill.
Right. We do have bills.
We have our own bills to pay.
First.
Yes, and that's our responsibility, and we provide a first-class, top-notch, five-star dispatch service, hundred percent. Our dispatchers are some of the best, I think, in the state, and I, I'd put them up against anyone. I really would.
And then we're gonna pass it on to the county if we don't.
Well, I mean, I don't think the county could do it any cheaper, because if they would want to take it over and fund it themselves, build their own center, or whatever, and none of that's really been discussed as a, as a, a serious option, I think it's been thrown out there, but I think we all would agree that it's probably not the most, the best use of taxpayer money. I think the best use is to continue to tell city to pro, provide the service, given that the county would cover the expenses that go along with that service, funding, and that's it. I mean, it's that simple. I mean, it's the best deal for the county, because they don't have the headache of it, which it is a lot of headache, it's a lot of work, or nobody would disagree that it's not. Sometimes stuff breaks down, and they've gotta go, Philip or Chief or any of the dispatchers have to go figure out how to fix it. That's a huge weight off of someone's shoulders for, for that amount of money. But you just guys, council's gotta decide what they wanna do, you know, I, I don't, obviously, I know Larry, yours is examples, none of those are obviously really options, but I mean, what else do we cut?
What other options?
Because if the county's not gonna pay it, then where do we come up with the money then? I don't know. I mean, the council, you can decide to put it again like the last year, that the county is to contribute, um, expected to contribute the full amount, and if they don't, then let's figure that out from that point on. I don't know what those options are.
Seems like it has to be that. I mean, we don't have the power...
And we're, your job and my job...
You know, and I've checked all my other revenues on my general fund, and I don't feel that I can change them in any way. Most of those figures come from the state, and, and I can check them with what we're currently getting, it all, it all's flowing the way it needs to be, it, it, it's working. So, uh, you know, I can go, I can put in a revenue between the six fifty, six fifty seven and then the nine fifty, if you want me to, to see what that would give you, if you still need it to cut, or what, um...
I'd, I'd still like to see us do everything we can to get those newer cops, of course, a raise, but...
What was it? I missed that.
Oh, I'd like to see us do what we can to get the newer cops a raise.
Patrolmen. So, Connie and I talked, and Gerald talked about that briefly, and while we'd love to, I don't, I don't know if we can do two on the patrol, because our concern is, if you do two on the, on the patrol, and we do one on the rest of them, will that imbalance your scale where your, your patrolmen are, is it gonna get them closer to the point where your other officers might, you know, like, wow, I'm only making this much more? Would it, would it mess up that range? I'm just concerned.
It, it'll affect it some, you know, um...
I just don't know, I didn't look at the numbers, it just, it's something to think about, because I don't want to create any problems down there, and you know, wow, I'm only making this much, and then that creates a problem for you and your officers, and I don't want to see that.
Keep in mind, though, with that, that the senior officers, when they do decide to retire, our retirement is based off a percentage of a first-class patrolman salary. So, an, an increase to them is, is appealing to the senior officers as well whenever they retire, because that's going to be a little higher retirement, so...
I see, okay.
It definitely does make that gap closer, but I don't know that it would be substantial enough to be a problem for you.
It was a misstep, I thought, well, it's discussed, because I, I didn't see that, didn't think about that either, so...
Chris, I'm, I think the other day when we talked, we did talk two percent, but in, Penny did the minutes for me and that, and it was discussed as a three percent.
I think the three percent is...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Spoke at the last meeting, and I hadn't had a chance to tell you that.
That's okay, I must have just granted two then.
So, I, I did do an estimate of if you gave a one percent to city employees, um, and the dispatchers, and then three percent to the first-class police officers, and one percent to the other officers, and that, it would basically take, it would basically, it'd be an estimate of forty two thousand dollars that we, you would have to have.
If you cut that out, is that what you're saying?
No, that would increase the budget, so if, if, it would increase it by that much. So you have another forty two thousand, you'd have to cut from somewhere else within the budget to make up for this.
So we're upping our cuts to...
Yeah.
Two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
If you choose to give a raise, yes.
But then...
Remember when, when, Brian was showing me something? When your patrolman get a raise, your retirement's based on longevity, and that goes up too.
Down overs.
Right? I mean, you gotta, you gotta look twenty years out, out there, I know it's a long way, but that's, somebody will have to fund that.
But the...
There's only, I think there's only one police officer left, and that was Bob Ackles down near the old lands.
Not giving a raise of a percent is, is really a cut, with the cost of living going up, other communities that are hiring and raising the wages have a better chance to lure our people away from us. I, I know Hamilton's going, gone through that for years, they don't pay enough, so their good officers come either here or somewhere else.
These other communities have a lot more tax dollars than what we got. When you're talking a Kaiser aluminum or an AK steel, that's a big tax dollar.
That we have to compete with, to keep good quality people.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, it takes a, it takes a lot of money to get a person on, as Derek said, send them to the academy, and quit them, and hope they stay. You look at a hundred thousand dollars tomorrow, we've got three of them up there.
That's all the more reason we should keep them.
Yes, because we got a lot of money invested in them.
And by not giving a...
But you can't. It's, I'm not blurring, we're, we're between rock and hard place. Unless the county comes up with some money, we've gotta find some more cuts, and I don't know where's that at.
Are we good if we don't pay a nickel to the county for the dispatch? Does that do the trick?
Yes.
No, we don't.
If we don't pay towards dispatch, get a dime, like we really shouldn't have to, then...
So, what that means for us, I don't know, other than, you know, I think if we're gonna try to keep it, we need to come up with a two-year plan because in two years, in 2028, with Senator Rowack one, my understanding is, is like Larry mentioned a while ago, the city of Tulsa City no longer gets a slice of the public safety dollars that we've come to expect these past several years. All of that's going to be going to the county. At that point, in my opinion, is that there's, it would be foolish for us to contribute anything towards that. They're getting their money that way. There's no reason for us to be digging into our general budgets and affecting everything else to pay for that. That's my opinion. Now, if we come up with a two-year plan and propose a number that this is what we can give and see if that's something they can work with, maybe, but I think if, if our, if our decision is zero, I don't think that's anything that they're gonna play ball with. Now, what that means, if they take it or what, I don't know, but that's just where I think we're at with this conversation is where that's gonna go.
I think you're right. Well, I, I think you're right also, Derek, and it's unfortunate, but in my mind, it's, it's not a question that they take it, it's a question of we get out of it.
Yeah.
It's yours. Your plan sounds very reasonable. I think I'm already beyond that, though.
Right. No, I understand, I don't disagree, it's not, it's not.
As far as I'm concerned, January first, 2026, they do dispatch. Believe, we legally can do that? Which we need an executive session to discuss our legal options? I don't, I'm ready to do it.
I think that, that if that were to happen, I, I think that it would certainly be impactful for public safety, and I know that's not what you want to happen. I, I think it would be impacted in a negative way to public safety. That's a huge operation that's been handled for sixty-plus years, so to change control that, I think is, is gonna come with some growing pains. But I also will say that I think the county's gonna get the money from us one way or the other. So, if we say 2026, it's yours, they're gonna have to impose another tax or something, then they're still gonna be getting our taxpayers' money. That's just how I look at it.
That's what I was gonna say, Derek, they'll have to have some kind of a tax. There's, there's no way they can fund something like this without it.
Right.
But should Tulsa City residents be the ones paying that tax?
Well, that, and you're double digging there.
I know.
Tulsa City people.
We are right now.
I know.
Yeah, you're right, Derek.
That's what, it's, it's not, I mean, I've been advocate for this chief, when you brought this to me back in 2020 or 2021, I don't remember what year exactly, and we worked hard, and you're right, you know, they, they are contributing more, but you know, a lot of the big contribution came from the piece that lit public safety that was changed around in the taxes that they did, and that was a huge, huge help to it all. You know, as far as the county general fund goes, they're not contributing a significant number, that I don't remember. Our general fund is, is gonna be paying this, you know, so.
Larry asked a short time ago about where they're gonna be cut. One, one possibility that comes to mind, and it was talking a little bit about in the joint meeting the other day, they are expecting a retirement on their end with the nine-one-one coordinator. There has been some discussion that the county has got our opinions on the things about maybe restructuring that to where maybe that role will take on more of the management responsibility, which would, you know, shift some of the payroll expenses over to them. That might be an area to cut the total budget, you know, and shift a little bit more on them, I don't know. That's yet to be determined, and I can't imagine that getting permanent before anywhere to consider where I'm most at October, so. But that's one area that I think there might be a little bit over there.
And Derek, you're much more rational than I am, and I'll, I'll admit that, but folks, don't, don't dismiss what I said basically the first thing. The county gave up three hundred and sixty thousand dollars of annual revenue by doing away with a solid waste fee. And they're now supporting solid waste out of their general fund. So, they do have options. They had an option, they still have options. The, the other option, I don't know how much money it would generate, but remember this came up during the discussion of the local option income tax a couple of years ago. The county, the local option income tax is based on, it's taxing people based on their incomes. So, if your income goes up, your taxes go up. It's a progressive way of taxing. The county is not at the maximum rate. They had a choice, they could've increased that to the maximum rates. Now, they're beyond that now, it's too late, but they gave up those options. We don't have any options. We can't impose a tax, can we, Chris?
I wouldn't recommend it for this, no.
Well, how can, we have any authority to do it?
I, I don't, not, not, not that, to my knowledge, not that, even if we did, I wouldn't recommend it. I mean.
Well, I wouldn't either.
Because our taxpayers shouldn't be putting a tax on our residents to pay for our county expense.
Exactly.
I mean, that, that wouldn't be fair. I think that'd be, I don't know. I just say, if we're gonna, if we're gonna contribute any towards it, whatever you contribute, if it's five dollars, or five hundred, or five thousand, or fifty thousand, or whatever, those are numbers you're gonna start cutting the budget to make it happen, to balance it. So, if you wanna contribute, what are we cutting?
Can, can we still put in the nine fifty-three and then try to come to an agreement in the middle over the next few weeks?
I'm just gonna get this budget in.
Well, I have to submit my budget form, my form three today, no later than tomorrow, but then your next budget meeting, you're having a public hearing on October the sixth, and that is when the public can come and discuss the budgets, but you, after that public hearing, can also discuss the budget some more. And then we're adopting on October the twentieth. So, that is the day that we will be adopting, you'll meet, in a council will meet in a special meeting after the water board meeting on that day, to definitely make the adoption. What, what I'm doing today is like years ago, when we would advertise it in the paper. We no longer have to advertise this information in the paper, but I have to submit it to the DLGF. And it has to be so many days before we have our public hearing and all of that, so.
And then, when we adopt it, it could go down, but it can't go up. Correct? Or am I incorrect on that?
Once I submit what I have to submit now, you can change things within, like the general budget from one department to another, you just cannot change that bottom line that I turned in today for the budget.
Okay, you can juggle a number.
I can juggle, you can juggle numbers around, but you can't go over that bottom number.
Sure, I'm most, I have to keep that nine fifty-three in there, honestly.
That's a, I won't support that, cause it's a fictitious number. We're not gonna get that. We're not gonna get it.
And I can, between now and adoption, I did check on this, I can change that revenue number, which is gonna change our, our operating balance, so you're still gonna have to make cuts then yet later if you don't make, if you don't make them today.
We're gonna fight it.
I just went in the system and put in if, with the nine hundred and fifty I originally put in, and I just put an estimated income of seven hundred and fifty, meaning the city would contribute two hu, two hundred thousand next year towards dispatch. That brings us down to still having to cut, then you would still have to cut ninety-three thousand. But that would zero it out then as that I would have no operating balance at the end of the year. As, as of right now. Now, you know, we have asked departments to try to watch their spending, but things come up that they have to have, you know, things break and, and that, so.
So, we're gonna be operating on zero or, or close to it?
Close to it, if we.
And that's if I had any raises, right?
Two hundred thousand for next year.
And that's without any raises?
And that's without any raises, yes. Yes, I have no raises in my numbers. I just have them, I just have those totals written on paper, and you know, we figured them out.
I would say, I, I find it very unfair. So, our taxpayers, so our residents, what we're gonna have to do? I mean, what do we cut? Where do we cut? Do we cut paving, like Larry suggested? Do we take, that's great, so our streets fall apart for a bill that's not ours, or do we cut employee? Do we lay off two employees? Do we, what do we do? And none of those are realistic, and I'm just throwing it out there, what do we cut? Do we cut, buy new police cars?
Well.
Those don't come out of the general fund.
Well, you move money, you would fund something else through that, I guess, that maybe, I don't know if you can, different.
Okay, yes.
Move things around to, yes, that's what I meant.
Something, for the police cars, we could pay something out of the general fund.
Yeah, and shift that around, but I mean, that's insane to do. I mean, I don't know what you cut. We've literally cut, I feel like even the mayor's budget wise, to the bare bones, we have a little to know, we can't even print, make a copy, that's how little we cut it, much we cut it in there. What else we cut? I have no idea.
I have no clue.
I gave you two options that I can support. I don't like.
Well, I know, yeah. And that's not fair to, to, to the paving, and that's not fair to the shelter now either. So, I mean, it's just, it's, we're in a, it's a damned if you do, damned if you don't, I'll just say it, situation. And it's, it's unfair that we are, have been put in this position. And, and I feel like, I don't know, maybe, maybe this is my, this is my personal things, I feel like we're probably gonna be made out to be the bad guys in this, and I hope not, shouldn't be. It's not fair to us. I mean, make us feel guilty over it, at least I do. Just, we wanna help, we wanna contribute, but at what point do we not?
If we don't contribute to the county or to the dispatch, what, what do we have to, how much do we have to cut then?
We have to cut about, if we don't, if we do or don't, sorry, what'd you say?
If, if we don't contribute to the dispatch.
We don't, we don't have to make any cuts. We're okay. And that will give us a.
Hundred and six thousand.
Hundred and six thousand in unappropriated funds that.
At the end of twenty.
And that's a small number normally. Normally, it's significantly more than that.
That sounds like a deal.
That's the, but then if we do.
But, that, it sounds like a deal, Mike, but it's unrealistic, because we pay the salaries, and then we get reimbursed that money. So, it's not like the county's making all these payments and then sending them money, so.
So, if we approve, the county asks us, if we approve zero for the county, and we do, like we just said, we contribute zero dollars to it, and.
We would fit the.
And we get the one oh, the one oh six is still there, unappropriated, so say they, something happens where they don't pay, can't pay, or whatever, we still have to find, we could reduce our budgets.
Next year.
Next year.
Yes.
By ninety-seven thousand. We could go and cut paving ninety-seven thousand come May or June, or whenever if we need to then.
Yes, you could do.
We can do that.
Appropriation.
But reducing them.
Yes.
So, we, we could do that. That gets us doing, if I'm making any cuts to it at this point, we could still just cut it later.
Yes.
Okay. There's, so there's two options. We can approve it, contributing zero, and depending on the, how much they can come up with, we'll know how much we'll have to cut more in twenty-six then. I mean, it could be the shelter, like you said, it could be paving, it could be an employee, it could be, we'll just have to look, I don't know where that's gonna come from yet. I'm totally throwing stuff out there, so no, don't say I'm cutting shelter or paving, this is, I'm using your example. Gotta have some example. I mean, I don't know. I don't wanna reduce, we can't reduce salaries, I mean, that's not even an option at all. And I, like, if we got any employees retiring, don't replace them, maybe, I, I don't, I don't know. But then, what do you get behind on? You know, in your upkeep of the city? I don't know.
By, by turning it over to the county, isn't that only going to hurt the employees?
Well.
Aren't they gonna have to cut employees or lower?
They can't cut employees, I mean, you.
Oh, that's good.
I mean, they can, but that would be, I don't think, I know the county does have public safety, they do have that as their best interest. I, I can't speak for them, but I know they, they do value that, okay? So, I don't think you'll see them cut an employee, cause there ain't no way on earth that one employee could do all this dispatch and stuff that they used to do.
Bare bones.
Because some days they could use three. It depends on what's going on. I mean, I've been down there before where it's quiet and, you know, hear the phone ring for twenty minutes, but that don't happen that often. But, I mean, but then you, sometimes they, they need four people even, you know, sometimes it's, you know, it's not just always the nine-one-one, you also gotta remember there's a non-emergency call that goes off a lot, too, and some of those calls are asking when something is or what, they, that's basically information, it's not mercy.
I got a question, mainly for Derek. You guys, have anybody from the county ever come down and seen the, the dispatch center? Have you had anybody from the county council or county commissioners come see it?
Yeah, I think, I, I can't say that all of them have, but I know there's been an effort by.
Okay.
You know, just the other day, ahead of the Jeff Go committee, one of the council members, Harf, right, Harf, he come down.
Okay.
And saw, you know, and I, I will say that that's where my anxiety about a change of power lies, is that, you know, I'm learning stuff every day about the dispatch center, and I've worked in that building for twenty-three years, you know, so if you cut us out of that equation, not to say that they can't do it, but that's not something that's like a life switch that we just can, can shut it over, you know, I mean, the, our EMS, our police officers, our citizens all rely on that service.
Yes.
There's, so there's two options. We can approve it, contributing zero, and depending on the, how much they can come up with, we'll know how much we'll have to cut more in '26 then. I mean, it could be the shelter, like you said, it could be paving, it could be an employee, it could be, we'll just have to look, I don't know where that's gonna come from yet. I'm totally throwing stuff out there, so no, don't say I'm cutting shelter or paving, this is, I'm using your example. Gotta have some example. I mean, I don't know. I don't wanna reduce, we can't reduce salaries, I mean, that's not even an option at all. And I, like, if we got any employees retiring, don't replace them maybe, I don't, I don't know. But then, what do you get behind on? You know, in your upkeep of the city?
By turning it over to the county, isn't that only going to hurt the employees?
Well-
Aren't they gonna have to cut employees, or lower?
They can't cut employees, I mean, you-
Oh, that's good.
I mean, they can, but that would be, I don't think, I know the county does have public safety, they do have that as their best interest. I can't speak for them, but I know they, they do value that, okay? So I don't think you'll see them cut an employee, because there ain't no way on earth that one employee could do all this dispatching stuff that they used to do.
Barely, in bare bones.
Because some days, they could use three. It depends on what's going on. I mean, I've been down there before, where it's quiet, and you don't hear the phone ring for twenty minutes, but that don't happen that often. But, I mean, but then you, sometimes, they need four people even, you know? Sometimes it's, you know, it's not just always the 911, you also gotta remember, there's a non-emergency call that goes off a lot too. And some of those calls are asking when something is, or what, they ask basically information. It's not mercy.
I got a question. Mainly for Derek. You guys, have anybody from the county ever come down and seen the dispatch center? Have you had anybody from the county council or county commissioners come see it?
Yeah, I think, I can't say that all of them have, but I know there's been an effort by-
Okay.
...of them, you know, just the other day, ahead of the Jeff Gokey meeting, one of the council members, Harv, right, Harv, he come down.
Okay.
And saw, you know, and I will say that that's where my anxiety about a change of power lies, is that, you know, I'm learning stuff every day about the dispatch center, and I've worked in that building for 23 years, you know? So, if you cut us out of that equation, not to say that they can't do it, but that's not something that's like a life switch, that we just can shut it over, you know, I mean, the, our EMS, our police officers, our citizens, all rely on that service. So it's, I'm afraid that they probably, there's no way possible that they can have any idea of the magnitude of what that operation is. You know, they're laypeople, I know they have the best interests and the best, you know, all that, and not to say that we can't help them, but that is just a huge operation, you know, so that scares me, it does.
And I don't see the county, I can't speak for them either, but I don't see them wanting to necessarily take it over.
No.
I don't. I don't see a sense they want to give it to them. We just wanna see them fund it like they should be, and us continue to operate it like we have been for the last fifty, sixty years, or whatever, how long?
And the mayor, I would say that the conversations that I have had with them, kinda one-on-one and whatnot, I think that's what they want too, I mean, I believe that, that they, they want to get to a point where they are hundred percent funding.
Yeah.
I just, they're, what they're telling me is that they just can't do it right now, you know? Two years from now, I think that-
Well, yeah, because-
...there's a solution.
Well, two years from now, we are basically, how it's gonna work is, and I may be wrong, and Connie and Larry, you correct me if I'm wrong in this, please. The edit income, the income tax money, what, the share that we get goes away, right? So if we're getting, I'm gonna throw numbers out there, say 300,000, it's different numbers and that, but say, we won't get that anymore. It goes straight to the county, they get it.
For our local income tax.
No, 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 no. The edda tax goes away entirely.
Okay, well, yeah, okay.
The county will have the option to pass a local option income tax, up to, I think it's one point, either 1.9% or 1.7%.
Okay.
And they will fund everything, they will fund edit-type projects, EMS, um-
PCDC and stuff like that.
Ambulances, they're not funding PCDC.
Okay. But that number is half of what the edit is now even, ain't it? Or significantly smaller, right?
No, I don't think so, Chris.
The city will be able to adopt a rate that will just be for the city residents.
Correct, yes.
And we will get that money, and that is to replace what we put, our certified shares that we put in the general fund, and what we have for LOIT public safety, and what we have for economic development. We will no longer get a distribution from the county anymore. My understanding is we will get it directly from the state on our residents within Telsi.
That's my understanding also.
And our rate can only be 1.2.
Seven, oh.
1.2.
1.2, okay.
Maybe 1.29, but I know it's 1.2.
But any money we got is gone, okay?
Yes, yes.
So I feel like we're still paying in a different, in a backwards way, by stuff is shuffling around, and this cancels out, and this gets put in, it's, we're losing out on money through that way. I don't know. I'll proper add my header in that a little further. I know, that's, that's still down the road, and there could be changes.
The city can adopt, I feel will not cover all the expenses that we're currently using for our local income tax.
Such as the police-
Such as putting in for, part of it supplements our-
Salary.
-general fund.
Okay.
Part of, and then part of it is the LOIT public safety, and then our economic development.
Which, the LOIT public safety is, we pay at least two officers out of that, right? Salaries?
Salaries, and we pay for several other items out of their maintenance on some things and stuff.
And all that still might change between now and then?
That's what I'm thinking too.
We don't know.
It could all change next year, but-
But it's changing between now and January 1st.
No. That won't. In the, don't go into fact, but I guess, at this point, you gotta look at what's in front of us. So council, there's your options. I don't know. You could approve it with the zero or something, but if you approve anything, we're gonna have to make more cuts. And you guys will just have to decide what you wanna cut. What's, what's important to you to keep and not keep, and go from there.
I'm sorry you guys are in this position. I wish we had a better solution.
Start over, Hunter.
Down to the county, put in-
Well-
And, I mean, tell us what, what you work. Got so much air, I need to-
Okay.
I mean, the budget, we're gonna be-
I've worked it two-
We're short from the county this year, we know that, we're gonna have to pay out a general fund. So, that's gotta come out. So for next year, I need to know what are, you've told so much, I'm totally confused.
I've worked it three different ways now, okay? And this is just dealing with the revenue part of the budget. What we're, what we're gonna receive for dispatch.
Okay.
I started out with, our budget is 953,000, so I put in that the county would give us 950,000, saying they're footing that whole budget.
Okay.
Okay? That means that that would leave us, at the end of the day, with approximately $106,000 operating balance.
Okay.
Okay? Then I figured it, and then let me explain too. This figure that I'm giving you, the cut, the $73,000 in cuts that you made the other meeting we had, that is out of these numbers. So those, those are out. So then I figured it-
That includes those cuts then?
That includes those, those cuts have come out, that reduced the budget, yes, by 73,400 on our part. I figured it at, I figured it at 750,000 revenue coming from the county, meaning the city would put 200,000 in there, meaning you would still have to cut 94,000, and that would even us out, we would not have an operating balance at the end of the year, next year.
Is that normal?
No.
That scares me.
No.
That scares me more than anything.
And then, I also figured it, if the county only pays us what they currently are looking at budgeting, and that leaves us with the deficit of still having to cut 185,439. One of the things that this Senate Bill 1 has, has changed is, we're going to lose more property tax with all of these new credits that property owners will be receiving. And they've estimated that the city will lose $104,000, no, excuse me, I said it, $94,000 next year in property taxes. So, and that's within my rate, my budgets that have a tax rate, which is the general, Q cap, and debt service. They tell us not to figure a debt service loss because of the debt service part of it, but, but, so if I take that 94,000, and I put in 35,000 loss for Q cap, that gives me 865,000 left yet to be lost, that we're gonna lose in the general fund. I have only put in 800,000. Now, I can change that number and make it less, but I don't know what this new circuit breaker law is gonna do to the city.
So, if you use the circuit breaker figures, the state gives you, our deficit gets up to a quarter of a million dollars, basically.
Yeah.
Not to mention, you do know, and I don't remember what year, us talking to the assessor's office, that the business personal property, and I don't remember what year this takes effect, 2 million or under, you don't pay.
So that's gonna affect our-
And I don't know what businesses are, you know, have their business personal property over 2 million.
That takes place in 2027.
Yeah, so, we're doing 26 budget, we're doing 26, I mean, I don't know how big a number that's gonna be, for the county, it's gonna be, it could be significant. City, I don't know, 2 million dollars in business or property is quite a bit, I don't know how many, off the top of my head, there's not a whole lot, I could probably think maybe a handful even really, the 2 million marchwise. But, I'm not a, I didn't get that, I was just so shocked at that number. So how's the county gonna afford dispatch when 2027 comes around? And eight, it's just gonna keep getting-
Worse.
Worse. You know, that's our hope, is if we can hold off to the end where they have this extra different options for their, we were just talking about the income tax part that they can do, but that's not, and that's not, they're gonna be back at zero again when they figure that in, because I think they're gonna lose, I don't know if many, and if I'm wrong, don't quote me on social media or wherever that I said it, this, because I'm wrong, but these are 14 or 18 million in assessed value, not taxed, assessed value-
Wow.
-that they will lose. Not only that's, when you said county, I'm assuming that included Telsi in that number, but that's a lot of money in assessed value to just fight away.
I'm sure it does include Telsi, we are counted.
Yeah, that's what I said, I'm assuming it did, but it, but, I think she said it would go from sending out 300 and some odd bills down to like, less than 20?
Connie, when did we get those circuit breaker numbers?
Usually it's May to the spring.
For 2026, we find it out in May.
In the spring, yes, yes.
I get it, it's gonna save taxpayers money, but-
It's gonna save the taxpayers.
And that, that is good.
We're all taxpayers.
But at what cost? At what cost of service are they gonna have to do without or not see? So we'll, we'll just have to make cuts.
Is cum, is this cumulative capital development general fund money?
No.
That's the-
That's a separate tax rate, and that sits in its own fund.
We can't cut that?
It wouldn't help in any way if you cut that.
We can, well-
You can, you can cut things in another budget and move it to this budget-
Yes.
-if I have enough in unappropriated area.
Right. That's what I was meaning when I, the, edit, not edit, whatever Connie was mentioning earlier, bring, stop. You could move some stuff around that way, but-
Yeah.
That wouldn't, I mean, edda fix it, yeah. I just hate it that we have to do this, I'm sorry, guys, I keep saying that, I know it's not fixing anything, but.
Well, I mean, page 38, we got, and I don't think we took it out, cumulative capital fund has $45,000 for redo of the Haggard and Park restaurants. Now, that's in Steve's budget, and I'd have to go look at all this again, I don't know, I'm just saying.
We've turned back his budget pretty good on that one, in the general fund. And with the current budget in Q cap development, I'm showing that at the end of '26, my operating balance would be 26,000. Now we could-
Well, and here's another one, and I don't remember what we cut. Cemetery fund. 30,000 for repairable section building. Did we take that out?
Yes.
Yes.
We already took that out.
No, go to your, we didn't even ask for it. If you turn to your, this is this year's budget.
Oh, okay.
Turn to the next page.
We cut that.
We didn't even, we did not ask for that for next year.
Yeah.
Okay? So it's, it's not-
Not there.
No.
No, no, it wasn't even asked for.
That was an easy one to cut.
But, but, it's still in this year's budget.
We reduced it and done something else out of that.
I'm having to take some transfers out of that.
Yeah, okay. So, we cut that too.
I don't know where it is, guys, we've gotta come up with it.
I don't know. I, I mean, I'm just gonna say it, I hate it that, I don't think it's fair that we are going to have to make these cuts for an expense that's not ours.
No.
And that's, that's not fair, I don't know, I mean, life's not fair, I get it, but geez.
Well, it goes, it goes back to Larry's statement he made earlier. They took 368,000, if they'd have sent those, they'd have 368,000 more in their general fund. But they didn't, they chose not to do that. So now we gotta suffer and come up with ways to cut.
Not necessarily. If we just don't pay, I, I, it just seems like that's a panacea, I mean, that solves everything, if we just don't pay anything. I mean-
How do we do that, Mike?
How do we do that? They're asking for a certain amount of money?
No, 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 no. We pay all the bills. Those employees are employees of the city of Telsi, so we pay all of them, then we bill the county for reimbursement, so.
They're, they're left in the red, but who's left to pick up the tab after everybody's already ate and paid and left the restaurant?
Right.
Um, you know, that's a legal question, Jeff's not here to answer that.
That's why we need to have a-
So, I, I'm not a, I can't answer that. I don't know.
I'll throw out another, and it doesn't help the situation immediately. And I'm not proposing this, I guess in a way I am proposing this, do we have any assets that we can sell, such as the depot building? Could that building be sold?
I would assume it could be. I don't know if there's any ties of grants that were, was built, I'd have to look into that, but.
I mean, it's not being used for anything currently, is it?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it does get rented out for events and stuff, like we had two there this weekend, last weekend, Saturday and Sunday, and the CVB still rents it. I mean, it's not costing us any money. CVB, it's what they pay the rent, the income we get off it, I don't know how much it goes even in the red, really, so.
If the, if the CVB cancels their lease in March or April, we'll not be getting any income except for people that rent the space out, correct?
Well, we could, they would vacate it, and we could rent that space out to somebody else, where they're at, meaning, so that, that cost could be shifted, but, yeah. I mean, there's options, we could sell it, any of it, I mean, I don't know if we, I mean, can we cut council salaries, mayor salary? I mean, I don't care. We have to.
You're not gonna pick up 185,000.
Yeah, I mean, mine's a chunk.
Pardon me?
My salary's a chunk.
But some of it comes-
I don't do this job for the money, so if you-
Some of it comes from electric and water departments, and kind of that won't help.
I'd do it for the blood pressure problems, would I do it?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we can-
It's working well.
It's working great.
We can, we can, I mean, I don't know if you can cut elected official salaries or not.
Sure, yeah.
I think there's a legal statute that you cannot cut elected official salaries beyond what they, probably, Mike.
There's something out there.
I don't know, I'm just throwing out, I'll be, if you-
I think there is something.
I mean, I don't care if you had to cut mine in half, that's fine with me.
It's not with me. We shouldn't-
I know, but-
We shouldn't be forced to make drastic cuts because they won't pay.
I know, but I'm, I mean, if, I'm, I'm a team, try to be a team player.
We just need to get, get it figured out, or Connie can submit it, and go on, and then Mr. Haggard Arnn will have to get involved.
I mean, yeah.
Because if it's legal questions, he has an answer, and I can't.
Yeah, I know. And that's, so, well, we've kind of talked, beat this to the ground, I don't think there's much more we could bring to the table, other than we know, we've got a problem here, and we, like I said, you could, you could approve it as is now, it's Connie's suggestions, and reduce it later, and maybe in the short, that's the simplest to do, that might give the council more time to look at some cuts here and there they can make, maybe it's 510 here or there, and it adds up to something, but that might-
Vice versa, we can cut it now, we can always do additional appropriations if we've got more money next year, too.
We won't have any money in there to appropriate.
Either, you could do it either way. It's, I don't know what's easiest for the clerk treasurer to do that, what's, because if you do additions, you gotta advertise them, right, in the newspaper and stuff, so that gets some expense and time, but what's the easiest, what would make easiest, most cost-effective and easiest for you in your office, I guess, is, without too much headache?
Any, any way we do it, it's gonna be, I mean-
Either way, those are the same, basically same cost, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
All right. Hmm. That stinks.
Are you open for a motion?
Yeah, yeah, it's, you guys, I'm just here to offer advice.
Me either. Here's another factor that Connie has discussed. We don't know how much insurance is gonna go up.
Yeah.
I have put seven percent, eight percent. They told us to be, they hoped that it wouldn't go up anymore between seven and eight percent, and I put an eight percent increase in there. I've also put in, you know, an increase in our insurance on our liability and, and our workers' comp and all of that, because all that keeps going up every year.
You're paying, correct me if I'm wrong, eighty-nine percent of the boys.
Approximately, yes, eighty-nine percent.
Eighty-nine percent of their insurance.
Yeah. And I was wrong. I'd said ninety-five at one point or something like that. I, I don't remember. I was wrong, and so I'm glad you set it up that it is eighty-nine. I, I was, I was wrong. So I'm glad it's corrected.
But why should our employees suffer because of the county's
That's right. You're right, Larry, a hundred percent.
Okay. And that's where I go, making cuts to painting and all that, and you know, everybody talks about it.
If you're open for a motion, and I'm gonna make a motion, and if it dies, it dies, but if you have your budget book on page thirteen or the street budget.
Which page?
Page thirteen.
Under the street and alley maintenance fund, we currently have a hundred thousand budgeted in there, correct, Connie?
Correct.
Uh, I make a motion that we reduce that to ten thousand dollars. So we pick up ninety grand.
I'll second that.
What line? Repeat that.
It's the, on page thirteen, it's the second from the bottom, so the street and alley maintenance.
It's down to a hundred thousand. You cut fifty out of it the other day.
Okay, so we're down to a hundred thousand?
We're down to a hundred thousand.
No, I'm saying we cut it another ninety thousand. That's my motion.
Okay, so that, that saves us ninety thousand. We still need what, Connie?
Well, let's, let's deal with these one at a time, Gerald.
So we got a motion made by Larry. It was second by Philip. We're at the further discussion point.
Well, I hate the cutters.
I know.
Street road money.
I know. For a bill that's not ours.
I, I don't know.
I don't know. You know, it's kind of like if you, if you had a bill from the electric department and you didn't pay it, what are they gonna do?
Tell me the better We gotta come up with a hundred and six thousand.
But we're not gonna shut off the dispatch, because we're not, that's not an option. We wouldn't do that.
Right now, if we keep the nine hundred and fifty thousand in there, we're okay at a hundred and six thousand. But if we're looking at what, if they only pay us what they budgeted, then we have to cut a hundred and eighty-five thousand, and that would get us to zero.
Okay.
So this would get us halfway there.
Get you halfway? I hate to do it, but.
Well.
I'm beyond angry. I'm just telling you.
Well, I'm, I'm
upset even. I'm not at that set level.
I'm gonna ask Larry, I'm sure, what areas are you looking to cut before we go on this?
What other areas?
Can we, can we say, cut that to seventy-five is what I'm saying, and make it work? Or what are we gonna find the other hundred and some odd, or whatever we need? Do you have any other suggestions?
The only, the only other one, Gerald, and, and I hate it, and I know I'll get blasted for this, but the animal shelter. I, I'm sorry, that's supposed to be a county responsibility. They, and I brought this up during our discussions, I think, at the last meeting. They reduced the amount that they're contributing, the county reduced the amount they're contributing to the animal shelter by nine thousand dollars last year. Because of that lease stuff. They own that building. It's my understanding that when the county got that building back, there was approximately a hundred thousand dollars in a special fund. And I, I'm sure they used part of that to fix it up so that it's useful and stuff, but animal welfare is a county responsibility. The Tel City taxpayers are paying twice.
So you're, you're saying that we cut the forty, we cut it forty-eight thousand, is what we technically approved, plus this ninety, that gets us where, Connie?
Hundred and thirty-eight.
And what else? How much more we need?
I didn't look that closely, Gerald, because I wasn't sure what we were dealing with. Let me glance through. Oh.
I mean, I got so much highlighted here. I have to go back page to page.
There's another potential source of revenue that we could do. It's not reflected in this, but, well, it is reflected somewhat in this budget. The IBtech lease, they're currently, they're getting that building for a dollar a year. I think they should be paying more for that building. I think they should be paying thousand dollars a month for lease. That would generate twelve thousand dollars more revenue for the city.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think they should just be paying a dollar. But, no.
You wanna discuss that today or what?
I don't have anything to, to discuss with him yet at this point.
I mean, the mayor and I, and Adam, have been invited to take a tour of that building, to see what they offer to the community, okay? But I agree with you. I think they should pay more. Okay? We just, like you stated, we replaced the area with forty-eight thousand dollars.
Yep.
But I've found out since that they ever made some repairs to the building, how their budget too. And what it is, I don't know yet, but.
Yeah, but I think they've got ready funds to do that.
I don't know what the other counties pay. I don't know. You, you had brought that up.
I didn't. Adam, or Adam did at the last
I mean, other counties, other buildings, IBtech buildings in other locations are paying more than a dollar a month.
Yeah.
That's what I'm, I mean, we can This is suggested. I don't disagree, but if they don't pay it, say, no, we're not gonna do it, and leave, what are we gonna do? They say, well, we'll just leave. Now, we've lost very good services to train people for POC or A T T C, C D L license, welding, cutting, electric.
Nursing facilities, because like, they have a nursing
Yeah, I mean
Program.
It's a great program, but it's to the point where they're gonna have to pay a little more.
It's a state-supported institution, Gerald, and the state is the one that's causing these problems.
I understand all that. I, you know, that's what we told those people when I made a motion to table that will tax. It's not us folks. It's your state legislators.
Yep.
And if they don't change it, we will be forced to address that issue come next spring. We have no choice. Because you can't continue to cut ninety thousand out of your paving and survive with your streets and alleys. You can't do it if the legislators don't fix it. And I, I don't think they will. I hope they will. So that's a different story, but I mean, I was looking on page forty-two, the M V H.
But
We, we have appropriated next year, or maybe this is this year. Which is this, Connie?
You wanna go to four, you wanna go to forty-three to see what we pass for next year?
Okay. And we've cut that to what?
I did have to cut it from one fifty to one twenty.
Okay.
Or a hundred and fifty thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand, just to be able to budget the balance, better balance the budget, because we do pay salaries out of there.
Okay.
And
Oh, I see it now.
Yeah.
I mean, we still, if we cut money for paving, we're still gonna have a little money left here, okay? Ten thousand dollars is not gonna pay, pay very much, as we all know. So I'm just, I'm just looking. So we're still short. We gotta find something somewhere else. I, I don't know where to go.
Well, you know what? Why don't you just leave it at that amount there? Just cut that, what you just, the paving part, and whatever Larry had another suggestion, and I don't remember what you said now, but cut those, and then that's it. Don't cut anymore.
If we cut ninety thousand out of there in the animal shelter, we, we've reduced a hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
If you're willing to cut our paving that much, and the county won't accept the plate and cut some more, then there's a bigger problem we got.
Yeah.
A bigger problem. Because, I mean, let's, they're gonna, if that's, I, they're gonna have to make their own cuts and make those tough decisions, like you guys just had to do right there, cut ninety thousand of paving, that your alleys aren't gonna get paved like they used to be. We're not gonna be able to go through these community crossings. Somebody's gonna forget the million dollars. We'll be lucky to apply for a hundred thousand dollars at this point. That ain't right. And so if we're willing to make those kind of steps, then they better really make some major steps. Because that's what, Jim's gonna fill the heat on that one, and we all will. When you see people complain on social media, hey, our, our street's not paved, our alley's not paved, why isn't this being done? Why isn't this being patched, you know, even? Or why are we just patching, not paving anything? You know, we're gonna have to answer to the residents, why?
I understand.
And they're not gonna understand. Especially if you tell them, but why are we paying a bill for the county? So, I mean
I do the contact their county legislators.
I'd do something, but I, I, maybe leave it at that, then you can do your additional cuts later, reducing the budget later. I wouldn't, I would be, I wouldn't do such like, well, we'll cut, 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 we'll find, when we found the money, and that's what we're gonna do, because that's not gonna be any incentive for the county to, willing to give any more. Well, they found it. That's good. We're good. That's my thought. We sharpened our pencil a hell lot sharper by doing that. They needed, now they're gonna have to sharpen theirs a lot sharper.
Howard doesn't fix a long-term solution, and it's, it's, it's kind of in a bad spot with funding, but, or the budget. But I mean, is it possible if we take this thing as like a six-month approach and, and go to the table with the county and say, you know, we, we all need to explore options here, but for the first six months of this year, we're contributing nothing or whatever, and you guys will get a detailed list of the expenses each month, and will that buy some time to, for them to explore? I mean, I just did a quick search online here about grants that, I mean, offset dispatching costs, you know, I mean, would that give some time for them to explore that idea? I hate to, I mean, before things start getting cut out of the budget, like Jim's budget and things like that, I, in my mind, are we, we thinking too much long-term here, or should we look at it more?
I mean, I think it's worth doing. We've done a version of that this year, you know, with invoicing monthly, and Connie's and her office has done a heck of a job, is breaking it down. I mean, down to the toilet paper. And the ones you didn't put in are where they, where they, the receipt actually I bought from Walmart from, I think, and broke it down really well for them, and they only paid, you know, if the bill was for sixty days, they said, well, we're paying fifty-eight, and that's it, or something like that, you know? I think it's worth trying that again, yes. It's just hope they would pursue, and I think they would, you know.
I just go back to the two-year thing. I feel like I'm looking at a two-year, or two-year project here, and it's bridging that gap of now and then, because I think that, that there's a solution that's available by option in twenty twenty-eight.
Yeah, maybe, but I don't know what that, they're gonna have other cuts coming other ways through that business personal. It's gonna hurt them, and then we're still gonna, then we're still gonna be short that, because we lose that, that distribution. That's not gonna near cover what we're losing, but if we implement our own, so we're still, it's, it's moving the, the shells around in a way. It's, it's gonna solve their problem in some way, but it's gonna, they're gonna have another problem this end. It's, you're putting out fires if another one's starting up before you get the other one put out all the way. I don't know. I, I agree it is, but I'm just scared what, I have to get a, I have to write all that down and start putting some numbers to, to understand it better, but in my head, it is
I made it, Larry Phillips.
Motion's on the floor.
Motion's on the floor.
That was to do only the paving.
Just the street and alley.
Yes.
Reduce it by, reduce it to ten thousand dollars. You'd be reducing it by nine, by ninety thousand, was what the motion was.
Right, Larry.
I wanna throw in one other item. And, and again, I don't like any of these. Okay, guys? I don't. I mean, I'd much rather be home, in bed, Janice. That's a joke. If you look at page twenty in your budget book, yeah. The swimming pool. Now, I'll probably really get run out of time on this one, but I don't know how much revenue we have come in off the pool, but I'm, I'm confident it doesn't fund a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
You're correct.
Close the swimming pool. A lot of communities don't have pools. We're very, very fortunate to have a pool, and I support it, and this is nothing directly that you see.
That would absolutely break my heart. I'd rather give up my whole salary than see that, and donate it back if I can and see that pool closed for those kids.
I'll make a motion.
They say I can't do some of that, but I'm, you know, I mean, it's just, it's for the kids, you know, it's the most
Chris, I know, I understand.
And that's what it's, what it's getting to. Your, your point is it's getting to what we might have to do crazy stuff like that.
Exactly.
That's what scares me.
Exactly.
That would just be a knife in the heart, because this, that pool is one of the most proudest things that I've done, and, and I know even Mayor Adams, that he has contributed to also. I'm, I'm
I understand.
I'm a hearthead. I'm sorry. I'm ranting over here.
Can, can we just send what we talked about, and then try to meet with the county council next week and see if there's any
I'll try to get another meeting with them. I, I was really hopeful. Last night would have been the one, but that didn't happen.
Then we'll know for sure if we have to cut something. Or what we need to cut.
She's wanting to turn this in tomorrow.
She's gonna turn this in tomorrow.
But yeah, I mean, go ahead and send it, but then we can come back in three weeks.
I will just have to, okay, it depends if you have, you, you've got a motion on the table. It depends if that goes, and then you, there's not been an animal shelter motion yet. It's just been talked about. That takes a hundred and thirty-eight out, that reduces the general budget by a hundred and thirty-eight, which still would be forty-seven thousand that would need to be cut somewhere, but I can work that in on the revenue. Where I said they would give us six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, I can, I will up that sum to be able to, be able, because I cannot turn this in with the operating balance in the red, so I will see what else I can do to change something to get it to balance out. I'm not, I gotta, gotta look at my budgets and, but look at my numbers and things, so.
And knowing that you've already fudged a little bit on the circuit breaker.
Correct. I could, I could always change that sum, too.
I wouldn't roll that dice. I wouldn't even roll that dice.
I, I don't wanna roll that dice. I'll tell you that.
That one scares me, too.
But I have to.
I know, but I don't, but then we'll be back trying to cut more later if we roll it, rather than, I'd rather only get our hopes up on that one.
So Larry, you're gonna amend your motion, or are we gonna make a separate motion?
Uh, let's vote on my motion to take ninety thousand out of, but Philip seconded that. I'd prefer that we go ahead and vote on that, and if you wanna make additional motion later, we can deal with that separately. Is that okay?
Yeah.
So a motion made, and seconded, it is all in favor, signify percent aye.
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 Opposed? Sorry, Jim.
What you do?
What do you
I hate it.
So do you wanna do the animal shelter?
I don't know where else we're gonna go.
I'm, they both, that, that kills me a lot, too, because
Yeah, I know.
But, but, right in the heart on that one, but I don't know.
I mean, this year, we promised her so much, and then if we had money, we would give her an additional, which we did, I think.
That's coming before you at the October meeting for their additional twelve
Okay.
For the remainder of this year.
Yeah, so, but we haven't signed any contract for twenty-six yet.
Jeff's supposed to finish this one up for the
This year.
Whatever, few months, three or four months, it's got to have on it, which is not, that's, that's changes a month. Whatever, few months, three, four months, it's gotta have on it, which is not, that's, that's changes in months, it's easy, should be. Okay.
I don't know. I mean, I think we already contributed something to that because our town's full of cats. I'm sorry. Can I call me over there? I'll talk to Chief before the meeting.
I mean, years ago, Gerald, do you remember when we would pay the shelter money out of the riverboat money?
Not often.
We used to contribute around sixteen, twenty thousand out of riverboat, from what I remember. Anybody else remember that? Chief, you've been around a lot. Do you remember that back in the day? It was riverboat, wasn't it?
The first is when, when the new shelter opened, they started out at thirty-five.
Yeah, it used to be like, it was under twenty, I thought, but, and I thought it came out of riverboat. And I'm just trying to see, I know in riverboat, we had Telsey Strong, the Historical Society, and Region Arts, and we reduced them each to a thousand. I mean, you could transfer, it's only three thousand, but.
What's this riverboat, I mean?
No pages.
City Hall Park, twenty thousand.
That is just improvements that would need to be made here at City Hall or within the park.
Such as the drainage in that wall.
Yeah.
That wall is continuing to standstone wall there is continuing to lean more and more. And on a some amazed insurance has not started saying something.
Why is it?
Well, it has been, but it's starting to lean a lot more. I've had some people look at it, and I know back even when Gail was mayor, that was a concern. It's not.
Yes, it was.
Gotten any better since then.
No, it's not getting any better, but.
And, I mean, we could always remove that wall and just take grass down to it, if nothing else. I wouldn't sell the rocks. Mic bomb.
I think that's a good idea, Chris, that to look at my budget, I only have an appropriate of twenty thousand.
What?
In Kimcat. Oh, wait a minute.
I'm in, I'm in riverboat.
In riverboat, and there's only twenty thousand.
Yeah, but I'm saying, what is, what else, what are pages are we voting on? I don't have my page number, so I'm sorry.
How much riverboat money do you get? Fifty-some thousand, sixty?
Not even fifty thousand. I think it's like four-eight.
Yeah.
Wow.
I'm trying to find it. My page.
Actually, you can look it, probably twenty-two.
I don't know the page. Mine's.
Page number fifty-one.
Mine's not numbered, so I don't know.
Forty-four thousand, is that right?
No, I, oh.
Is what's appropriated.
Thank you.
Or sixty-four thousand.
Sixty-four. So see, we, we had extra money and we've been losing.
I'm just looking.
I know, and you know, we, we keep money, we, we appropriate money in there so that we do not spend it. Because this is for city elections, because this is the fund that we pay for our share on the city elections. And the last time it was a big event.
Well, it depends, it was a primary.
Yeah, it depends. I, I don't, I don't remember quite.
The city has to pay election inspections, right? Whenever it's a city election, we have to, we have to pay for that.
I mean, you could reduce some city hall improvements, I guess. I don't know how we fund that wall. I have no idea. I mean, we could roll the dice and leave it as is, and if it falls, it falls, and.
Then we have to fix it.
Well, just hope no one's there and get hurt either.
And this is just another crazy question. I'm just in the mood to ask it today. How much does the fountain contribute to the wall problem?
Fountain don't contribute really anything to the wall problem. The, the, the wall problems contribute to the drainage as it goes around the circle here. You'll notice there's a drain on this side. There's none on this side, and if you look, you'll see all this sediment and sand and whatever washes near that flagpole on the corner, the Indiana flag. And that's where that water is washed and has pushed that out over time through that driveway.
So there needs to be a.
There needs to be a drain there put in, and some of that washing is also washed under the concrete around that fountain a little bit.
Yeah.
I mean, it did crack an area there about two or three years ago, and they put the fire truck there. On September eleventh was on Dragging Main that same day, and they had the fire truck there with the flag displayed and the, I don't know. Stabilizers.
Put out.
Balancers, the arms to help.
Yeah, that put those out, right.
The way that that did, the hydraulics have did push and crack that, but I don't know, we, how hollow, that's just a freak accident or visually a problem there. But a drain on this side would fix it. The other side does have a drain now. I'm not sure when that was put in, but you can tell there's, it helps it. It doesn't probably totally fix it, but. Again, you're, how much, for ten thousand dollars, you can dig a hole for ten thousand dollars.
I'd kind of like to. I think we ought to give something to the animal shelter. So if we could cut that ten thousand and then put ten thousand back in the animal, that's not much, but there's a lot of animals in Telsi to go up there. And it's a county problem, I agree, a hundred percent.
Yeah.
But they do take animals from the city.
They do. They, they've been a.
I mean, I'm just going to be out there. If it don't go nowhere, it don't go. I don't.
What, what did you say?
Cut, cut ten thousand from the city hall park improvements and put the ten we're cutting back to the animal shelter. Cut them from forty-eight to ten thousand.
And you're talking within the riverboat fund?
In the riverboat fund. Instead of, instead of taking the total of forty-eight out.
Gotcha, okay.
We're gonna use, we're gonna subsidize with riverboat money.
So you're gonna cut ten thousand out of the riverboat fund, and you're gonna make a new line for ten thousand for animal shelter?
Yes, that's.
In the riverboat fund?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure.
That you get on that.
Yeah.
So my motion would be to, in, in the riverboat fund money, page fifty-one, which we, that's pretty what we, in general, we can use it, I remember. Is to cut city hall park from twenty thousand to ten, and then add a line in the riverboat, ten thousand dollars to fund animal shelter.
And then what are you doing in the general budget for animal shelter?
Taking out forty-eight thousand, I think.
Taking out the full forty-eight, okay.
I mean, will that make it work? And once again, we're.
It'll make it work, but is there any way, like, say, middle of next year or something, could we make a line item?
You can all, if we have.
You can always.
You can always do that.
If we have an appropriate budget, you can all.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm for that.
You know, if the county comes back and starts funding this, then we got more money.
That's what I was gonna say. If something would happen, you know, the moon winds up with, with Saturn and all this, and it all comes through, then we could help Molly out again.
Yes, well, we could, yes.
Because that, you know.
We can restore.
I'd hate to see them animals suffer, you know.
I know you've got dogs. We did too.
We had a situation yesterday. Dogs in a house.
Really? Your house?
No, not my house. I don't, I, I love dogs, but I'm not, not for me.
So my motion is to, out of the riverboat fund, cut city hall park from twenty to ten, add a line, animal shelter, ten.
And then you're gonna cut forty, we don't have a motion on the animal shelter within the general fund.
That's, is that part of your?
Is that part of your motion to cut that forty-eight? I'm just asking.
Unfortunately, I will add that to my motion. Molly, don't get mad at me, but we ain't got no other choice to cut funding forty-eight thousand from the animal shelter.
Second.
Now, if we get more money from the county, we can revisit those.
We can revisit all this stuff.
Yeah, it'd make a huge difference if they do that. So that's my motion.
Okay, motion was made by Gerald and it was seconded by Larry. Any further discussion?
No.
I mean, unfortunately, whoever's watching and listening, you know the story. We're waiting on, see what the county's gonna do for us.
Breaks my heart.
I mean, we did, I, me too, Chris.
I know, I know. I, I know. Sorry. Make some money, yeah, okay. All in favor, signify percent aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, so Connie's got.
So you still gotta finagle your revenues to make up for forty-seven thousand dollars, or not?
I'll, I'll do, I'll, I'll work on it.
But that gives you a net, or excuse me, an operating balance at the end of the year of zero dollars, right?
Correct.
That's not good, folks.
No, that is beyond the most.
I, I will look over all of this again and see if I've missed something that I've looked over a lot, so.
I'll be interested. I'll have a mayor's roundtable tomorrow. I'll be interested to talk to some of the other mayors of what Thursday do. This isn't a good thing. I mean, because we're, we were operating and living within our means and surviving. Even with the cuts, we made it work, and now we're making it, had to make these additional cuts and.
Yeah, we've got a lot of things we normally don't cut to make it work.
It's put us in a bad spot.
Is Troy and have Troy and Calton contribute anything to the, committed to?
No, we gotta have that joint meeting where they'll be there to, to see what they can contribute. Now, for some reason, we made these significant cuts, and that's our contribution, and they don't contribute, I'll come unhinged. I'll just tell you that right now. It won't be pretty. Because that's not right at all. I mean, it will be the, a dark moment, I'll tell you, for me, because I'll be mad at that. So is there a motion to adjourn? Oh, no, we've got another thing. Sorry, I'm, my, yeah, no, not that, I'm just frustrated. I'm sorry. Okay, so we had item B to the agenda. This is the nondiscrimination implementation policy, or excuse me, plan and policy. You can see on there, have we, have we adopted this, and Janice is here, basically, it's reaffirming what we've already got, and it's something that we've got to do. Does anybody have any questions on it that, and once we do adopt it, it's, it's the same as last year, pretty much, actually identical, but we just gotta say, yes, we still love it.
It's, it's a requirement to get federal and state highway funds, correct?
That's correct.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Larry, seconded by Gerald. Any further discussion?
Aye. Oh.
See, you're frustrated too now. Good, I thought my thought was, Larry's gonna tell you that. Okay, so no, no more further discussion. All in favor, signify percent aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now.
I should have voted against.
Motion, because Janice, you gotta sign it, so that's why I got the page.
I need to.
Yeah, uh, down there, Gerald. So now, is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Motion by Phillip.
Second.
Second aye, all in favor?
All in favor, motion.
Aye.
Opposed?
Stop this evening. I hope it works.